Okay, it is six o'clock. So, welcome. We, we are live streaming this meeting tonight, so we ask if you have something to say, please step up to the podium. And with that, we'll call the meeting to order. And hopefully you've all signed in. And we will rise for the pledge. Welcome, everybody. Just, uh. So, everybody is clear. The. This is not the meeting that you come to. And present your case about the valuation on your property. This is the meeting where we go through our budget. And then you can comment on things that you like or dislike with the budget. Uh, but uh, that's what this one's for. The, the one that you contest your evaluation, that meeting is in the spring and when you get your notice in the spring for those. So, welcome to the Truth and Taxation Meeting. And we will start out with a presentation of the two thousand twenty-four county budget by County Administrator David Minke.
Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. And thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Um, we'll just, the order for tonight is up on the screen. It, it's basically the same as you, uh, picked up if you grab the agenda. And wanted to start with an overview of how did we get to tonight? So, we started the formal budget process back in August. On August fifteenth, we had a budget meeting. Uh, and then on August twenty-second and twenty-ninth is when most of the department budget presentations and requests were made uh, to the county commissioners. And then in September, uh, we had continued discussion at the regular board meeting. And then September nineteenth is when the county board approved the preliminary levy. And that levy, uh, was used to calculate your taxes as shown on your statement that, uh, you received in the mail that brought you to this, uh, tonight's meeting. Then, in November, we had, uh, continued discussion at, uh, county board meeting. And that brings us to tonight, December seventh, where we have our Truth and Taxation Meeting. And then after tonight, the last formal step, uh, will be December nineteenth, which is a regular county board meeting where the county board will adopt the final, uh, property tax levy and final budget for two thousand twenty-two. So, jumping right into the property tax levy. Uh, this chart, if you start at the bottom, uh, you get the total levy. So, the proposed levy for two thousand twenty-four is twenty-two million, one hundred and thirty, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars, which is eight hundred and fifty, nearly eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars more than two thousand twenty-three, and comes out to a four percent increase on the levy. And then looking, uh, going, jumping back up to the top of the chart, you see the top three lines, the general fund, health and human services, and road and bridge. Those are the funds that expend most of the county money. Uh, and so you can see the levy for those funds. Uh, the general fund, uh, increasing six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars or five percent. Uh, human services is not increasing the levy at all this year, and so that's what that zero is there for. Uh, the road and bridge fund, the levy is increasing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and all of that is dedicated to vehicle and equipment purchases. Uh, building fund has no increase. And then you see there's the jail bond, courthouse bond, and CIP bonds. Uh, the jail and the courthouse bonds are pretty self-explanatory. Those are the payments for the building that we're in uh, tonight. And then the CIP bond is for the North Pine Government Center in Sandstone. And you can see those vary a little bit from year to year, either up or down. And those are set by the bond documents when the debt is issued, uh, on those projects. And then we have a technical equipment fund, and that is proposed to increase, uh, the levy fifty thousand dollars. And then, uh, the elections fund, uh, the levy, proposed levy for that is forty-five thousand dollars or a three percent, or excuse me, a three thousand dollar increase. And so you can kind of see that, how that twenty-two million dollar number breaks down in all the different, uh, funds of the county. This chart looks at the expenditures. So, the levy is just a part, for the, for most of these funds, the levy is just a part of the funding. Uh, and so again, general health and human services and highway, you can see those are where most of the money is spent. And then that right-hand column is the change. And from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, for the general fund, it's almost a two million dollar increase, uh, for health and human services, just under a million. The highway fund is going down about one point, uh, just under one point three million. And that is based on fewer, uh, projects. And most of the expenses from highway are paid for by, uh, state and federal uh, highway dollars. And so as those projects come and go, that can move up and down, uh, without much impact on the levy. Uh, and then we have an opioid settlement fund. You may have heard in the news about those nationwide opioid settlements. Uh, Pine County gets a slice of that. And then the COVID nineteen relief fund, uh, that accounts for uh, what are known as the CARES Act or the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, those were federal dollars that were passed through to the county. Uh, then we have the building fund. And if you remember from the last slide, that number was twenty-five thousand dollars of levy. There's ten thousand dollars a year that the city of Sandstone makes as a payment from the sale of the John Wright Building. And so that, uh, has, I think, eight-ish years left on that payment schedule. Uh, and then you see the bond funds again, and the technology, equipment, uh, elections again. And you see the expenditures in the election are much more than the levy was. Uh, because there's some spending of reserves there. And there's also some, uh, reimbursements that are made by the cities and the townships for the work that the county does, uh, related to the elections. And so if you get to the bottom of that two thousand twenty-four column, you'll see that the total proposed budget for Pine County is fifty-five million, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. This just takes that information and puts it into a graph. Uh, and so you can see, you know, highway largest followed by human services, uh, public safety at twenty-seven percent, and then general government at fourteen percent. And on this slide, general government is pretty much everything that isn't health and human services, highway or public safety. So, uh, assessor, auditor, administration, all of those, uh, types of expenses. Same numbers, but just sliced differently. So, you can see that salaries is the single largest expense. Uh, and if you put salaries and benefits together, which is the cost of labor, uh, it comes out just over fifty percent. I think it's fifty-one percent of expenditures. Uh, and then services and charges, uh, which are contracts for services, could be road projects, things like that. Uh, and so those are the major expense categories. And so if you think of that fifty-five million dollar budget, eighty percent of everything that the county spends is on this, uh, this slide. So, salaries and benefits are significant road and bridge construction, debt, out-of-home placement, uh, vehicle and equipment purchases, medical services to prisoners, and the library appropriations. So, those handful of lines make up eighty percent, uh, of all of the spending. This chart looks at revenue and expenditures to answer the question, is the fund balanced? And so, starting up at the top, you see the general fund. It shows a net positive of ninety-six thousand dollars. Uh, that was talked about at the two board meetings ago, uh, by the county commissioners as designating that as a contingency, uh, which is something we have not done for a number of years. And I'll, I'll have a slide in the, uh, later on that will show the fund balance and how that has been decreasing a little bit in recent years. Uh, health and human services, it has a negative, uh, uh, budget. There is planned spending of reserves, uh, in that budget. And so it balances with the use of current year revenues and planned use of reserves. Uh, highway is perfectly balanced. Uh, the opioid settlement fund, um, it, we just, uh, we don't show those revenues. And so that's spending of fund balance. Um, looking, so the bonds are in there, which you've seen those numbers already. And again, the sa- the total down at the bottom, uh, fifty-five point nine million dollars. And then when you do all the arithmetic, you get a negative, uh, ninety-three thousand, but that, uh, again, is spending, planned spending of reserves. This shows all of those funds and how much of that expenditure is funded by the levy, by the property tax levy. And so in the general fund, of all the spending, fifty-seven percent of it is uh, property tax levy, and the balance is other revenues. And I've got a slide that will show those in more detail later on. Health and human services, about a third of it is levy. Uh, highway or road and bridge, only fourteen percent is levy because most of that is, uh, state and federal aid funds. Um, then there's no levy until you get down to the building fund and the, the thirty, twenty-nine percent is that sandstone payment. Uh, the bonds are a hundred percent paid by the levy, and bonds are required to levy a little bit more than the actual payment. Uh, and so that's why you see those numbers at a hundred and five or a hundred and six percent. Uh, the technology fund is a hundred percent levy, and then elections is just about a quarter, uh, levy for this upcoming year. So, of, in the general fund, of the non-property tax levy money, most of it is county program aid. That's that two-point, nearly two-point-four million dollars. Police aid is another one point one million. Payment in lieu of taxes is just under a million. And then the county contracts with some of the local jurisdictions for police patrol. And so those total, uh, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars of revenue, uh, probation aid, interest earnings, uh, we get an annual E nine-one-one grant. And if you get your telephone bill, you'll see that little E nine-one-one charge. This is, that, part of that comes to Pine County. Uh, solid waste assessment, this is the special assessment on each improved parcel. Uh, and then there's, uh, taxes and, uh, tax penalties and interests, and the assessor contracts. And the assessor contract number has been decreasing, if you followed that, uh, year after year, because we're reducing the cost to the townships of what the county charges for those assessing services. So here's a snapshot of the general fund. And it's just shy of two million dollar increase, uh, or about nine point two percent. And contained in that one point nine million dollars. Um, and this is across the board for health and human services and highway as well, with the wages and benefits. Uh, there's an about six percent general wage increase in the budget. Uh, and then about a nine percent insurance increase in the budget. And so that's driving a lot of it. And then also in the general fund, we have some increased public safety spending. Uh, there's a new assistant county attorney and a new probation agent. And then we have, uh, fifty thousand dollars to replace handguns for the deputies, uh, fifty thousand dollars for less-than-lethal-force uh, weapons, uh, fifty thousand dollars of target range improvements, and thirty-five thousand dollars for, uh, to replace an ATV. And then you see that contingency of ninety-six thousand dollars shows up here as well. Um, and so there is no planned use of reserves, uh, this year. And the, uh, levy portion is thirteen point one million dollars. And then looking a little deeper into the general fund, these are the general fund departments that have the most spending or are the most expensive. So, the county sheriff, that's the patrol side of things, uh, nearly five point nine million dollars. The jail, nearly five million. County attorney, uh, nearly one point six million. Probation, one point three million. And then, uh, information technology at a million dollars. And so there'll be, um, remember that graph earlier, where public safety was a big slice of the pie. Those top four departments really drive, uh, how that, how that impacts the levy. I won't read all of those, uh, to you, but I can leave it up there for a, a moment to, to see. And then this next slide, these are just some workload measures, uh, in the auditor, treasurer, and zoning, uh, office, uh, in some historical data on some of the typical work that's done and the volume of that work. And then we did the same, uh, for a few of the departments, the assessor recorder's office. And jail operations, I'll call out, uh, kind of in the middle of the slide, you see that cost per inmate per day. And that has been rising over time. I remember when that was like a hundred dollars a day. Uh, part of it is fewer inmates, uh, and part of it is the cost of running jails has, uh, increased significantly in the last several years. Um, but you can see during, in two thousand twenty-one, our population was very low, and so that cost per inmate per day, uh, spiked a little bit. Uh, now, health and human services, so total expenditure is just over twelve million dollars. It's, uh, just under a million dollar increase. And the levy portion actually goes down from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, from thirty-four percent to thirty-two percent, uh, primarily driven by, uh, intentional spending of reserves. And then, again, just some workload data in, uh, health and human services. Child welfare. And then highway. So, total expenditures are actually going down just under one point three million dollars. Uh, we have about one point five million dollars of local sales tax collections in the budget. Those funds are used exclusively on county roads that are not state aid roads. And so there's no, uh, external source of funding for those roads. Uh, and so the sales tax is dedicated exclusively, uh, to repair and maintain those roads. And then the levy portion is actually going up a little bit, uh, from a year ago, primarily due to fewer projects and less, uh, state and federal highway funds. Just a recap of the debt. So, we have four outstanding bonds. Uh, the courthouse and jail will be paid off in two thousand thirty-one. And the North Pine Government Center will be paid off in two thousand twenty-three, or excuse me, twenty thirty-three. Uh, and total outstanding at the end of this year is just under eighteen million dollars. In the general, or we have, it is just a slide on fund balances. This is kind of the question, how much money is in the bank? So, in the general fund, there's just over six million dollars with four point six of it assigned, um, unassigned, meaning it can be used for any legal purpose. And the county board policy says that there'll be a fund reserve of between twenty to thirty-five percent. At the end of two thousand twenty-two, we were at twenty-two percent. Uh, if we were at thirty-five percent, that would be, uh, seven point, almost seven point three million dollars. So, just to give some perspective there, uh, health and human services has, uh, fund balance of three and a half million on, uh, assigned. And then highway is showing a negative fund balance, uh, that's due to the timing of, uh, county state aid payments. And so it's not a cash flow concern. It's, it's an accounting, uh, thing that just makes us look bad, but it's really not bad. Uh, and then land management has just over two million dollars in fund balance. So, the property tax calculation is, um, takes your property value and your class rate. And so if you're a single-family home, your class rate is probably one percent. There's over fifty different class rates, uh, but most folks in here, uh, are homeowners, I presume. And so, uh, one percent is the most likely class rate for your property. And so you take your value times your class rate and you get your tax capacity. So, in the example, if it were a two-hundred-thousand-dollar value, times the one percent, you get two thousand dollars of tax capacity. When you add up the tax capacity of all the property in Pine County, uh, you get to that fifty-million-dollar number. That's right in the middle of the slide. And then you divide the tax levy into that to create this tax capacity rate. And then that rate times your individual tax capacity, or in our example, that two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, um, that four point, forty-three point eight percent times the two thousand gets the eight hundred and seventy-six dollars of taxes payable. And that's just the county portion, uh, so it doesn't include city, school, special districts, et cetera. But that's just the, the simple arithmetic of how, uh, you translate a property value to an actual, how much do, does a person owe? And then this chart, it's pretty busy. So, I'm gonna maybe just focus on, kind of in the middle of the chart, you see that rural land and thirty-nine percent change on the value. The left side is the value, the right side is tax capacity, and it has a thirty-eight percent increase in tax capacity. So, to the extent that your type of property is increasing at a rate greater than other types of property, taxes are gonna shift. And so if you look at that big colored sheet that was, uh, on the table, and you see, uh, from a zero levy up to, I think it's a, maybe a six percent levy, what happens to each individual property? Uh, it varies where some of them, despite a zero levy, might still go up, or despite a, a four percent levy, uh, will still go down. And that's just the impact of the shift in tax capacity, um, based on how all of the property values have changed, or the, as a percentage of the total. So, that concludes the formal presentation. And now it's open for, uh, Mr. Chair, for you to take comment.
Okay. Everybody follow all that? We, if, if people wish to make comments on our, how we got to this point, how we got to the point where we're gonna levy twenty-two million dollars roughly, um, which, which in simple math is a, is a four percent levy increase. So, I'm guessing there aren't more than two people in this room who end up with a four percent increase. That's the average. Some people are lower, some people are higher. But that's the average of, of all the tax capacity in the county. That's the average increase. Mark, you got anything to enlighten us with? You usually do. Yeah, please.
Since, since you called, I was just gonna sit and be quiet, but since you called on me, um, I did have one of my questions answered earlier, so thank you for that. Um, so as far as the process, uh, in September, you adopted the preliminary budget and the levy.
Yep.
And so now you'll be voting on. So, it's, I guess my question is, the numbers that you showed us tonight, uh, Mr. Minke, are those what was adopted in September?
Yes, the, the levy that was adopted in September, that's on your, uh, truth and taxation statement, is the levy that I will bring to the December nineteenth meeting, unless the county commissioners between now and then give a different direction.
Okay, uh, well, I won't say too much, cuz it, you know, my, my main concern is the meeting last night when the city of Pine City had their truth and taxation hearings. So, we're, uh, those of us who live in the city are getting socked pretty hard. Um, so, so thanks for having a little more discipline here. I appreciate that. Um, but as you move forward, you know, if there are areas where you can continue to keep the downward pressure on the budget and the, uh, um, levy, that would be much appreciated. Because, uh, I think most of us in Pine City are seeing, uh, on the city portion of our taxes, what, twenty-five percent, thirty, thirty-five percent increases. Um, and not to mention, and, and in addition, those who, of us who are living on, uh, the area where there's gonna be street construction next year, are gonna get socked, uh, thousands of dollars, in my case, nineteen thousand, for a street assessment, yes. And, and the school is gonna be looking for a bond referendum next year. And we all want good schools, right? So, um, so any way you can help to kind of keep the overall burden down, it would be much appreciated. Because I mean, the, the discussion about the school came up last night, that you know, if at some point, people are gonna say, I, I can't pay any more taxes, and that's gonna hurt the school referendum. So, thank you all for what you do.
Thank, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi there, guys. My name's Henry Gregware. I've been a lifetime, uh, resident prior to Pine County of Shisago County. And I got my hands on some property up in, uh, Del Grove Township northwest of Grindstone Lake a little bit. And then the last few years, as I, it'd been abandoned for about fifty years, this property. So, I've been making improvements, and I expected to see a hike in my taxes as the time went on. But as time went on, it seemed like every year my taxes went down a little bit, which I was incredibly happy for, you know, tore down an old building. None of this, is, it's all coming out of my personal pocket. And I'm trying to do everything in my off-season. And now we come to the, uh, this year. And I had my concerns last year when my property values, it's in two portions, and they had doubled each portion. And when I called the assessor about it, they said, well, that's your problem because you live next to the lake. We're taking the value of the lake properties and utilizing that against your swamp land, your agriculture, and your trees. My, well, I, I do have concerns about this. And essentially, I said, no, that's tough to talk about it when you get your taxes. We'll see if they go up or not. I'm, okay, we'll wait. So then, just, you know, reiterating what the gentleman in front of me just said, if you got, we appreciate keeping it down. It's been going down, which was helping me a lot in the construction and the restoration of the property. Just getting to be able to get out and walk around my entire property is pretty much just come from the drop that I've had the last few years, just adding on to my budget. And now seeing that this is gonna go up, my two sections, one I'm looking at here is a fifty-four point two-three percent increase. And the other one's a thirty-eight point five-three percent increase. Admittedly, they're smaller sections, so I imagine when you're just looking at the percentages like that, the smaller values are gonna go up higher. But, at the same time, the rural areas, along with the folks in, in the cities, we're all gonna get hit really hard with this. And we appreciate your guys' every effort to try and keep things as down as possible. You know, especially when, for us with the wetland areas, we don't get any incentive to keep them in wetland, and we can't dry them out to put them into any kind of agriculture. So, there's not a whole lot we can do with that, other than let the ducks and the deer go swimming around. All right, thank you, guys, for your time. I appreciate it and appreciate the work you do. You could just
Thanks.
keep them a little bit on the lower side for us.
And, and you please stop, stop at the assessor's office.
Okay.
And, and chat with them about the values.
All right.
Make sure we're tracking right.
I do. They were very adamant that their computer system was a hundred percent accurate, and they had no desire to come out and look at my swamp.
Well, they're, they're right down here right now, so. Okay, thanks.
Hi, my name's Dan Swanson. I live in Pine City. I have just some questions more about specific items in the budget. Would that be the time to ask now?
Yep, this is, this is what it's for.
So, um, with the opioid settlement money, uh, I'm, I'm just curious, is there specific programming that is planned for this to go back into? Or is this get absorbed by the general fund?
No, it, it, uh, it actually is gonna get, it, it's pointed to public health.
Okay.
And public health has some programs that they are working on to use that. That's why the expenditure is what it is this year, because that's the programs they've come up with for this coming year to e- expend some of that money. And that, that money will continue to come for, is it eighteen and a half years? Is, we know how much we're gonna get. There's still a couple of companies that, um, the federal government hasn't settled with yet, so we, we might see a little bit of an increase there. But, um, we kind of know what we're gonna get every year, so you gotta, uh, stay within that budget.
That, that's wonderful to hear. And then rumor around the campfire is, is that there are renovations potentially needed for this building that have been asked for at the state level, um, as a wish list thing, and the question I have is if those, wish lists, uh, uh, funds don't come through, is there gonna be an additional ask, um, for potential more money to fix the building, or?
Do you wanna meet it, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have a bonding request in to make some renovations to the jail, and we need to increase the amount of segregation between different classifications of prisoners. And, right now, because our population's low, it's not a significant problem. If we do not get state support to make the changes, there will be a Plan B or a Plan C.
Okay.
So, there'll, it'll be a, it'll be a process before anything is done.
Okay, okay, thank you for your time.
Yep, thanks, very good questions, thanks. Other questions?
Hi, I'm Bill Walkie, living, uh, Brenham Township. And so, my taxes went six hundred, twelve hundred, and now this year they're proposing sixteen hundred. That's in the last three years, so that's a big jump in there. So, just on the bottom of my statement for this year, it's a twenty-five percent increase. Um, Brenham Township is not overly populated, so I don't believe that this is very fair in looking at somebody that's retiring up here. The only, only thing that we have is social security, we don't have anything else. So, by keeping on increasing it by big jumps and bounds like that, it's not fair to the smaller people that, you know, basically don't have much to go on, period, so. I would appreciate if you kinda work at keeping the taxes, especially in the outer rural areas, try to keep them down. Would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Can't say too much more than that.
No, thanks. Yep, go, go, go ahead.
Somebody I know. I, this is just gonna be a mathematical
Yeah.
thought process here.
Yeah.
Our estimated market value went up seventy-two thousand dollars. I guarantee, we can't sell the home for what you think we can. When you say our taxes are staying at a four percent intrigue, increased, you had seventy-two thousand, that four percent makes a big difference. And yes, we're both retired, my husband disabled. Um, we really appreciate not being taxed out of our home that we worked for. But, then, back to the math, when you say four percent, and when you do this, you can almost double your four percent to eight percent. So, to say it's only four percent is unfair. When you keep jacking up the market value, I have, this is my fourth home. Market value used to be less than what you could sell it for, right now it's more than I could sell it for. I'd never get this, but you're gonna be taxing me next year on that. So it's not four percent, it's higher than that for us.
Thank you, thanks.
Scott Sandberg, I live in Brenham Township, and I know my property value, they said went up seventy thousand, and I'd like to know how, and that I'd take seventy thousand and walk away from it right now. And they've got it listed at just shy of a hundred and seventy thousand. You know, and it just, I have no idea how they come up with the figures. I already did, and they gotta come back out and reassess it, cuz she's got it listed as having a full basement, and it's a crawl space. And I told her that. You know, the house was built in the fifties, uh, we moved it in there, and they've got it listed built in the seventies. You know?
Did you move it in, in about the seventies?
No, moved it in in twenty-twenty. Cuz there was a mobile home there, and I got rid of the mobile home, and figured I'd get a, this is an old cabin that we moved in. You know, it was either put it in a dumpster, move it, so moved it in, and when I get time to work on it, I work on it, but it's to the point now, it's, oh, it went up seventy thousand, I'd like to know where, you know, where could I get a check for it, I'd walk away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Peterson, and I own a seasonal property about that far from Carlton County, so I'm on the far, far end of Pine County, so we don't have any of the city. Trying to think of the right word, but don't have any of the city, uh, benefits or benefits. Um, I am supporting Moose Lake Schools and not Pine County Schools because of where it's located, serviced by Moose County, and our property's gone up like almost two hundred thousand dollars in two years. And the assessor came out to look at it, left it posted on the front door, and I tried to call him to say, I think you ought to come and actually tour the house, and never heard back from him. So, I think Jason, I believe was his name, I've already talked to the, the group down there, and it just, that's outrageous. You know, to have that kinda increase in a two-year period is just, you know, hard to sustain that. So, and I know I couldn't sell it for what it's valued at, because with interest rates and everything else, the way it is right now, it's out of control. So, I mean, I wish I could enjoy some of the benefits of the city, but, you know, we're on the very, very, I don't even know what police department to call. Now, do I call Moose Lake, do I call County Sheriff? I don't know, you know, so, but, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, James McGuinn, uh, question for you, what you, what are you getting four percent increase on the levy, property tax increase, is that where you're getting that from?
The, Mr. Chair, the increase in the levy is just a calculation of the total collected in twenty-twenty-three versus the total proposed for twenty-twenty-four, that that difference is a four percent increase. How it impacts everyone's individual property tax is way different, and that's where this colored sheet, right? If you look at the, at the green, which is the four percent, you can see how each individual property might go up, or some of them even fall, so.
Right, but I mean, I've got three properties, one increased to thirty-eight, one's forty, one's fifty, and one's like eighty percent. You know, I got one eighty at, one eighty acre parcel and an eighty percent increase, and another eighty, that's a, I don't know, forty percent?
The taxes?
Yeah.
The Pine County?
Hinkley.
The, the Pine County?
Yeah.
The, the line, the line for Pine County went off eighty percent?
Down to the bottom, I got one that's, um, that's eighty acres that, last year was two fifty-six. This year, or, this year I should say, and now you're going up to four hundred and seventy-six dollars for next, for twenty-twenty-four. So.
Could I see that? Did you talk to the assessors?
I can go talk to them, no, I haven't yet.
Oh, okay. I'd go talk to them, I, uh, thank you.
I'm just, one more question, you know, I mean,
Yeah.
I know everything's gone up in the last couple of years, you know, I mean, since COVID, I mean, we all know that, it's hard to get anything you want. But on the other hand, I, you know, you got thirty percent to up to eighty percent. I don't expect to get a raise to cover that kinda money, you know? I mean, a lot of places, you're lucky you get a three percent raise, and when you order like this, I mean, where are you gonna get that kinda money? I mean, kinda let paycheck to paycheck to begin with, so, you know, doubling it, you know, it's kind of a hardship, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, the, the assessor, if, if you have questions, if your values really seem out of whack, um, please, talk to the assessors, and, uh, cuz sometimes things happen, you know? Um, but, uh, they try their darndest to be, uh, spot on, but, um, sometimes it doesn't work. Uh, so we, the whole thing is trying to treat everybody fairly. Um, you know, so everybody, it doesn't matter if you live in Royalton Township, or New Dozy Township, or Windermere Township, you should be treated the same, and, um, values don't track that way, that's part of the issue, is they, you know, values go up down here, or, or up there on ag land, or on commercial property, or on, on home property, so. Uh, it'd be a lot easier if, if you could make the calculation, and if we set a four percent levy increase, that everybody went up four percent, but there's adjustments. I believe Kelly told me, there's actually sixty-two classes of property now. Um, uh, it's a very complicated system that Minnesota has, uh, and they do that to try to help individuals that, uh, need, need a special compensation or whatever, and so, um, that makes it, that makes it difficult to do the calculations sometimes, and, and sometimes errors are made. Or anybody on the board got something they wanna say?
Your house, or, I would go check with them and, and make your appointment tonight while you're here.
I had Jason come out to the house and left a yellow post-it, and I was, I wasn't there.
Right, but you can go make your appointment tonight while you're here for him.
They're gonna have Jason call me, so, cuz you can't just guess
Right.
what's you're looking at.
No, they, they wanna, they wanna come and
And I would love to have them walk through the house.
Yeah. All right. I wanna thank you all for coming, um, and thanks for everybody that spoke, we do, you know, it, it, it's, uh, it's not, it's not the funnest job in the world to, to raise people's taxes, and, uh, no, but, but, here's the big but, if you, if you remember the budget, uh, almost half of the, almost half of the levy dollars go to public safety. That's the sheriff, the correction officers, the county attorney, uh, the probation people. That, that's all of that people, so, so that's, that's your levy dollars. You know, half, you, you think of that, if you're paying a thousand dollars, five hundred of that is going just for those departments.
I've been talking about that and looking at the Moose Lake School District, I mean, they're sitting with a surplus from what I could tell from the, the financial that I presented off there, so, and now they want to add to that surplus that they already have, and it's like, I thought schools and hospitals and everybody's supposed to be nonprofits.
Yeah, it, let me, let me tell you, we, we have in our budget, we have budgeted to add to our surplus. Because I was on the board when our surplus was razor thin, and, and Kelly, how much do we have to have to pay every, every week?
Well, every other
Every other week? About six hundred and fifty thousand to make payroll and everything, so if you only got eight hundred thousand in the bank, and, and some payment doesn't come in, um, now you have to go to the bank and borrow money to make payroll, and then you're in a bad spot. Then you're get, you, that's a downward spiral, so, we, we have on the recommendation of our, our auditors, and, and just good financial soundness, we wanna have enough of a cushion to make sure we can get through those, uh, that we can cash flow, uh, our, our system. It, it used to be on highway projects that, if we were gonna do thirteen miles of, of paving this year, we'd get a check before the paving season started. And then we could put that in a bank, earn a little interest, and then pay the contractors as jobs got done. Well, now, that, that is in reverse, now we write the checks out, and then we submit it for reimbursement. So, eh, that seems like a pretty small thing, but it turns out to be a huge thing. That's why when you look on that financial statement, even though we're not broke in the highway department, it shows that we had what, about a half a million, half a million dollar deficit, because of the way the payments line up.
Mr. Chair?
I ask again
Yep.
point that I brought up about who do I contact in the area that I live in?
If you're living
the sheriff back here.
You, um, you live in Pine County, so you call the Pine County Sheriff.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And I mean, like I said, not far away from Carlton.
And if you live across the road from, uh, Carlton County Deputy, he might show up first. You know, just because he's that far away.
They do kinda spread that out, though, or depending on where the call goes, or how does that work?
We, we have three districts, um, in, in Pine County, so, to, to try to spread the deputies out.
Okay.
But you, you know how long it took you to drive down here? If, 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 uh, somebody's already on a call up in your district, and then you call, and the guy's gotta get there from Hinkley or Pine City, it, you know how long it takes. I think they do an incredible job, um, you know, but it's, uh, it's a huge geographic area to cover.
Had to call once or twice, and yes, I have.
Yeah.
You're right, Chuck.
I was just gonna go back to when you were talking about reserves, where the state suggests us to be higher, like fifty percent.
Yeah.
We chose to go way less than that, and that's because of things that can blow up anywhere, you know, and problems and things like that. But the other thing I wanted to add is, we are also facing, in, in operating the county, inflation costs are driving things crazy for us too, so that, that percentage of increase that, you guys can't get a double whammy, right? I mean, we all do, you pay taxes, they go up for us too, and then the taxes hit you again, so you get it again, but the bills have to get paid, and we still have to have s- some cushion for business. And, we, we debate it all the time, cuz it's not fun, we don't wanna be a bank of the people's money.
Just wanna get reelected.
No, it's, oh, it's, it's, no, I get it, it's a hard, hard balance.
Yeah. Right. Yep. No, we hear ya. No, we hear you.
That's why when you look at these, those are, that's our hoses and we look at the impact. Of everything.
Yeah.
Seventy-three percent.
We either bought really well.
We can sit around and talk, but the meeting here, I think we're winding down at the meeting. Um, we appreciate, we really appreciate you coming and we really appreciate you, um, speaking up and, uh. I, we, I don't think you're gonna see a five hundred dollar decrease in your taxes.
Well, I'm not talking about this year, next year.
Next. Yeah, we.
Yeah.
We, uh, I think we're pretty, um. We've been, I've been on this board a long time and we had, uh, we had a lot of years where we had zero percent. One year we had a one and a half percent decrease. I wouldn't say that's the wisest thing to do in retrospect, because then we had to play catch-up for a couple of years, but we got by. Yeah, I, I hear you.
Well, one thing I could add, I guess if I can, Mister Chair.
Yeah.
Is if, you know, one thing that I guess I've had to do is sell land. Didn't want to, but I looked at land as an investment and a holding, just like when they, when they talk about. Having reserves, you talk about the school that has a cash reserve sitting there, the state will tell us we should have a cash reserve. Um, I guess I look at. A cash is an investment, stocks is an investment, social security is your income, you earned it, that's yours, an investment. Silver, gold, collector cars, whatever, is an investment. Just so everybody's aware, our county sits with valued at over twenty-three million dollars. But it is a holding of thirty-eight thousand acres of tax forfeited land. I didn't, I didn't see that necessarily, or any disinformation, but just wanna make sure everybody's also aware of that.
I'd just like to use the microphone to say, I don't think there's anyone here who would disagree. If you can show us any company or any person who will pay what you guys are proposing, we'd all sell. Every last one of us and then you guys won't have any voters to tax.
And at thirty-eight thousand acres of land, that's only valued at twenty-three million, but we're sitting on that land here. And if I, I've heard people say to, you know, that was a recommendation to me, well, sell some of your land, pay your taxes, well. Well, no, I, I understand that, but.
They, they sell when they're holding out.
Sitting on a lot of money here at this, this table, this building holds. A lot of land that is not bringing in money to this county, so logically, if you have two pieces of land, right? Two people paid all the taxes, you take this land away, this person, this person has to pay it all. Yeah, that's the point I'm trying to make, it's just.
We, we do, we do, uh, if you, if you remember back in the budget presentation. I do have to point out one thing that. We do, uh, uh, make a pretty good substantial amount of money selling timber, har- harvested. Timber, timber rights of the county land. Uh, so last year, we sold, uh, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of timber off of three hundred acres. And, and then we, you know, it'll be in probably forty-five years before we cut it again. But it is a, it is a cash for us and it's a recreation for us and for everybody.
Our pilt money is right on here too, Mister Chair, that's the payment and move taxes from the state and, and.
Yeah.
That's like almost a million, I think.
And right now, there's a, there's a, uh, federal lawsuit that we're, you know, everybody in the state is trying to figure out. How we're gonna weave through that and somebody above our pay grade is gonna figure out how, how it shakes out in the end. But we, we can't sell that land and keep any money ourselves right now anyway. Because, till that lawsuit is solved.
No, the lawsuit was a Supreme Court ruling that Tyler versus Hennepin County. It was unanimous decision, the Supreme Court ruled it as the Minnesota property tax scheme. And all I would say before I sell any of my land, pay my debt, I'm gonna log it first before I let it go back, forfeit it. It's kind of a shame that somebody loses their land for a few thousand dollars. Then the government logs it off for a few hundred thousand dollars. Tyler versus Hennepin County, it's a pretty good read.
Anybody got anything else?
I just wanna add that we've sat in meetings with some of our township officials and they, they've come here to talk to us. Asked us not to sell their forfeited land, which we sold the forfeited land at that time, um, but. They have asked us to keep it so that their grandchildren and their great-grandchildren and their great-great-grandchildren will always have someplace wild to go where they can enjoy. So there's, there's both sides that all of us are trying to deal with, we've got JJ's side where, um, we should sell everything. We've got this other side that's saying, don't sell anything, we wanna have it for our families to enjoy or for people to be able to hunt. So trying to take all of that and figure out what is the best case scenario, so we do have some memorial forests and some land that people can utilize and, um.
Well, thank you, Terry, and we're all aware of, of, uh, what Chingutana State Forest, Banning State Park. General Andrews Forest, what's another big one, Nama G? No, that's all the public land she's speaking about that people can.
It was all tax forfeited.
Where, what is that, what is it being used for?
I think Terry just tried elaborating it.
Yeah, look at it.
Show me a map.
Yeah.
I'm tech challenged.
We got nothing to tech budget here for you.
I'll get you a, I'll get you a plat book and you can look it up.
She made a good point of, you know, land to be used, land to be used for, for the public, but it's just, how much is, how much is enough? You know, how many times do you pay to change your oil? It's, it's a duplication of services, our tax dollars always already pay for all these state forests.
I have a question.
Yeah, can you stand up to the?
Talking about raising taxes, well, what we haven't talked about and what I, I'm kind of looking at is. And I've been here to talk to you guys before about the library appropriations and I do believe that it's mandated at two hundred and some odd. And yet we give three hundred and seventy-one thousand.
I can take that one.
Yeah.
Um, I'm on, I'm on that board and so. You're right, two hundred thousand dollars are in that ballpark, was stipulated by statute twenty years ago that we needed to pay. So in twenty years, your cost of livings have gone up, your, um, inflation has gone up and what the libraries have to pay. Has increased substantially and so what they did was they figured out by our usage, by our tax capacity and there was one other thing, um.
Population.
Population, thank you.
Our population though has been going down. From what I have.
Yep.
Pretty stable, it might have gone down a thousand.
Yeah, but it's going down, so that does, that does not justify, in my head, in my heart, maybe you guys as well. A hundred thousand dollars more than what we're mandated to pay, especially considering the trash that they have in our lib. Let me finish, please, especially considering the trash that they have in our libraries that is there for the children, it's groomers are using that. To traffic our children and I talked to you before about the fact that my son was sexually assaulted. Okay, so it's a real personal thing to me, get that trash out of our libraries, at least put it in the adult section. Cut it down to the bare minimum, it would lower our taxes, real simple. Other thing is it's the salaries that are being raised, have you increased any services? I don't think so. But you're adding staff and giving raises and raising our taxes for it? Doesn't sound real good to me, I'm sorry.
There's, there's mention of the state mandate is a certain amount of money and they do want an increase. And then, uh, Terry, like she said, she could answer this, um, the state gave out of the, the budget surplus. Two hundred thousand more already to the library? So I guess I'm just hopeful when we have to make a decision here of what we're gonna get the library, at least that amount, we don't have to give them. Because we already gave all that money in tax dollars to St. Paul. Then we give tax dollars to it from Pine County, so to me, that's just simple math there, that's, that's low hanging fruit right there. But the library was already given money by the state, right, Terry? From the budget surplus?
Yes.
Thinking there.
In our.
If we choose to not pay them the minimum that they stated, which is this amount here that we will be paying them, not the, not the money that was set twenty years ago, but this, this amount of money. We will be closing libraries and so then it's whose library do we close because they can't, if we don't pay for that library to be open. We're gonna lose one, so have, do any of you guys live up by Sandstone? Their library is phenomenal, have you go in there and see it, it's absolutely beautiful. Um, Pine City, I look at the programs that they have at the libraries and the people that utilize them, um. I can't, I could never figure out what we would close because people use those libraries and, and they like the libraries and. This is what we need to pay to keep those libraries open, I understand about the book. And you, you know that we went and we said that we wanted that book moved, but our hands are tied because of the right to speech. Because people have a right to say what they want, there's the, what is it, which amendment? First, first amendment, thank you, the first amendment where they have freedom of speech. I understand, and that was, this was argued to the max, to the max and we. Yeah, we were told.
So we need to start protesting.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna solve that debate here.
But that's why.
Any other, any other, uh, comments on the budget?
One thing, with the huge surplus of money that we have, state of Minnesota.
Yeah.
Does any of that come back to you guys? Cause obviously it was from all of us paying our taxes and buying. I mean, there's a huge surplus in the state of Minnesota.
I think David, David could probably answer it, couldn't he?
We did, uh, get more money, we got enough money, um, our probation. Department for years as, and we have argued with them, the state legislators, that the reimbursement rate that they gave us. There was a, there was a deal, it's kind of a neat story, it was made nineteen ninety-six. That the state would pay fifty-five percent of every probation officer's salary. Then, then budget, hard times came and so they started prorating it, but they never went back and fixed that. So, before this coming year, they were down to twenty-three percent that they were paying us. And so we've got that back up to. How much, Matt?
About, almost to the full, almost full.
Almost full.
Not full, but the.
That's why we added a probation agent back into our budget because we've, we've got the money there, so, so some of it does come back.
Yeah.
And Mister Chair, if I could add, there was an increase in county program aid and there was a one-time increase in public safety aid.
So that stuff the, the sheriff is doing with new weapons and fixing up the range, those are dollars that came from the surplus.
It was small compared to the.
Yeah.
Seventeen billion they had or whatever.
Yeah.
We had high hopes, they were.
Obviously, that surplus from us taxpayers, you taxpayers, you know, you're, you're better there. But it's like, okay, now there's seventeen billion or, you know, whatever the amount is.
So would it be?
Yeah.
Billion.
What, where, I mean.
They just announced two point seven.
Two point four or whatever, yeah. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
We will, thank you all for coming, we'll declare the meeting adjourned.